Good morning. Thank you for being here for our council briefing. We're joined by council members Sawant, Musqueta, and Pacheco. And if there's no objection to the minutes of the June 17, 2019, meeting will be approved. No objection, the minutes are being approved. From the -- we have a few special meetings today. Just for the viewing public, at 10:30, we'll have the Select Committee on Homelessness and Housing Affordability. And of course, follow the briefing, we may have a short intermission. And then after our full council meeting this afternoon, we'll have a Parks District Council meeting. It'll be about 2:30 or a community time after our 2 o'clock meeting. On the full council agenda today, from the Governance Equity and Technology Committee, we have three CTAB Community Technology Advisory Board appointments. Renee Peters, Jr., Tori Madison, and Stephen Maschewery. And we look forward to that. And I'll go around the table now and you'll go over our full council actions. So Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you, President Harrell. Good morning, everyone. There are no items on today's council meeting agenda from the Human Services Equitable Development and Renters Rights Committee. The next meeting of the committee is scheduled for its regular time tomorrow, June 25, at 2:00 p.m., where we will discuss with renters who live just south of Seattle, who are facing a no-cause eviction. As far as we understand, if they -- obviously, we know that if they had lived in Seattle, this would not have been legal because of the just-cause eviction ordinance. So we will be discussing the importance of extending that beyond Seattle, and we will also be urging their landlord to renew their lease. Later in the meeting, we will be discussing with representatives from All Home, who will present the results from this year's point-in-time count.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. On this full council agenda today, we have a proclamation honoring the Seattle Channel for winning five regional Emmys. And I have a proclamation here to give to them. If we can get it signed, that'd be fantastic. And then, as far as my committee meeting, which meets tomorrow, the Civil Rights Utilities Economic Development Arts Committee meets tomorrow morning at 9:30. And we have a pretty small agenda. We have the reappointment to the LGBTQ Commission, but also a navigation team second-quarter proviso report. This is the proviso that the council placed on the navigation team funds and is requiring regular reporting on data associated with the navigation team. And it also includes some reporting required under the city auditor's checkpoints. So I hope folks can, if they can't join us, I hope folks can follow along. We have no regional committee meetings this week. I am in office hours this Friday between 2:00 and 7:00 o'clock at the Senior Center of West Seattle. Office hours are drop-in, or if people prefer, they can make an appointment. Either is acceptable. As far as major events coming up, or last week and coming up, last week, I spoke on a panel at the Women's Center, Aileen Morris New Leadership Institute, along with Cindy Domingo and Sharon Tamico Santos. It was a really, really great opportunity to speak to young women who are considering careers in public policy. Coming up this week, Councilmember Musqueta, I'm sure, will talk a little bit about the Labor Management Leadership Retreat that we have coming up. And then on Saturday and Sunday, the Dalryche Neighborhood Development Association is having their annual Arts in Nature Festival out at Camp Long. And it's a really neat, interactive event, both promoting arts, actually in nature, really experiment, experiential way of enjoying art. And there's also a lot of music. And also, just wanted to make a quick plug. You may have noticed, last Thursday, myself and Mommy Hara, the Director of Seattle Public Utilities, went out to Recology and took a little spin on the electric garbage truck. It's the first in the nation, Class 8, electric garbage truck. It was pretty, pretty cool.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Juarez.
Hi, I apologize for being late. It's Councilmember Bagshaw's fault.
It'll just be in the minutes. That's okay, don't worry about it.
I know. So I'm glad to be back. I love you people, but a week was not enough, so I'm just gonna say that. It's the first vacation I had since last August, so I, yeah, it was good. Thank you. Okay, so, last week, Councilmember Bagshaw chaired the Civic Development Public Assets and Native Communities Committee for me. Thank you very much. I understood it went really well. I was out of the office. I love how my staff wrote a family commitment, "No." I was on the Oregon Beach, enjoying some time alone, thank you. So, thank you for chairing the meeting, and I'm happy to be back. The CIPNA Committee held two 2018 reports on the Race and Social Justice Initiative, one from Parks and Rec, I understand, and one from the Sales Center. And I saw the PowerPoints, they looked great. Our next meeting is Wednesday, July 17, at 2:00 p.m. In regards to District 5, on May 29, this has been going on a long time. On May 29, 2019, Seattle Parks and Recreation finalized the acquisition of Lake Washington waterfront property. If you all remember, it was called Save the Beach. It started like, I think, 2013, and it finally settled. This is in North Seattle on Lake Washington. The site has been a public, small-street-and-beach property used by the community as a public park and access to, and an access point to Lake Washington since the early 19 -- I don't know if it's the 1900s, but, okay. In 2013, it became clear that the land was not, in fact, publicly owned. However, after strong advocacy from neighboring community members and leadership from our city attorney and Parks Office, we reached a settlement and finalized the purchase of this property. The property totals about 13,000 square feet, mostly water with a small shoreline. This acquisition will produce many benefits for the surrounding neighborhood and every D5 resident, of course, all of Seattle, who enjoy recreation on Lake Washington. And the beach is accessible by foot or by bike, and is most easily reached on the Burt-Gilman Trail. Now, this is a sad note, and because those of us who live up in District 5, we know Jesse Gurnett. Jesse is a, used to work at Value Village, and we know his mom because she works at the Starbucks on Lake City Way. But on Saturday, June 22, there was a memorial walk for Jesse, a lifelong Lake City resident, to honor and celebrate his life. Unfortunately, he was hit by a car on Lake City Way on March 29. The driver later called up police and is identified, but the case is still unclear and under investigation. And I should point out that he was in the crosswalk, and he was not walking against the light. And we all know who Jesse is because we see him all around Lake City, and we know his mom. So with that, pedestrian safety is serious, and so are speed limit signs. Pedestrian safety remains vital, not only to those who build our streets, but also to those who use them. And so, we are committed to keeping safety the priority, not only in Lake City Way or Aurora, or any of the, it should be, obviously, for our whole city. Jesse, I went to the memorial, and his family has described him as a beautiful soul, among the many positive attributes. It's kind of sad, they've had a memorial up for him for over a month, or since March, with his picture. And I was really proud of our community that came together and put together the memorial. And just on a lighter note, I want to apologize for eating the taco at the Lake City Library, which I understood you could eat a taco there. It was renovated, the Lake --
She's soaking through?
Yeah. Okay, I just have to say this. The Lake City Library was newly renovated. One of the things that we asked, besides getting the ADA and the bathrooms redone and the new conference rooms, yes, we had, there's a floor space with tables so people could sit there with their children and have a snack that isn't carpeted, so it's safe to eat there, and then plug in your phone. And so, I, at the market, went in there and ate a taco, and apparently, that has caused another uproar.
What?
Uproar.
I'm so sorry.
Yes, so, just like when I made the joke about, "Thank you for forgiving me for my library fines," which I don't have any, it was just a joke. I want to apologize for eating that taco at the Lake City Library, in the area where you're allowed to eat a taco.
Did you say, "Don't you know who I am"?
No, oh, yeah, right. I say that everywhere I go.
Wow, amazing.
So, I just want to say that.
Welcome, welcome back. I'll tell you, you were missed when you were gone.
Thank you. And I, and we have our meeting this afternoon at Park District Council at 3:00. Okay, very good. Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. Nothing on the Finance and Neighborhoods Committee for this afternoon, but we've got a couple of major, important things happening today. First, immediately after our council briefing and after the executive session, we have the Select Committee on Homelessness and Housing Affordability. That's the committee that Council President Harrell created a year ago. The briefing is going to be by Tess Colby from the mayor's office, updating us on the regional homelessness governance work. Important message for all of you sitting at this table, we need a quorum of five members. So, as soon as the executive session is over, you know, the five-minute break, but ask that people get back so we can get going on that. We're also going to have an update date on the region's youth and young adult homelessness efforts. Melinda Gia Vango from Youth Care will be here. Also, discussions from All Home and our Human Services Department. I ask that our department come forward and give us some wins, because we are criticized so much about spending money and that nothing is happening. And I cannot say how many times people say, "Well, if you only just did," but of course we're doing that. So, I'm hopeful today that we can begin to have these opportunities where people can say, "What is going right in the community?" Obviously, we need to do more. Obviously, we need a whole lot more housing. We need more money for mental health and drug addiction purposes, but this is moving forward. So, I am hopeful that you will all be there. We'll go just immediately after executive session, five-minute break, and we'll get started. Also, tonight, I am leaving to go to Spokane. We have the Association of Washington Cities meeting. I continue to be the large-city representative on that board and will be, at least through this meeting and possibly through the end of December. We'll see where that goes. But I'm also supporting the woman from Spokane and our friend from Tacoma, if either one of them want to step up for that. So, this coming Wednesday is our next Finance and Neighborhoods Committee, and it's a really full committee. So I know Councilmember, I think Gonzalez is back by then, but I don't know Council President Harrell. We've got the Yessler Crescent Proviso on our Seattle Parks and Recreation vote, which we have to raise so that we can begin to spend the money on City Hall Park and Yessler Crescent. We'll have the vote, continued discussion and vote on Bobby Humes, who is our new Human Resources Director. We will also have a briefing and discussion on the sweet and beverage tax, creating the Dedicated Fund for Revenue. And I want you to know, Councilmember Juarez, that I have been steadfastly working to make sure that not only are we spending money on the things that we have said we would, but to make sure that your focus on food banks has been, and will be included in this, and we've invited not only the members of the CAB and GOT Green, but also the North Helpline. So Kelly's, we've reached out to Kelly Brown to invite her, just, I wanted to make sure you knew that. And the second item, of course, is we're creating the Dedicated Fund for Revenue on our retail and short-term rental tax. And that includes a number of folks who were the awardees from last year. Colleen Echohawk will be here. We will have African Women's Business Association as well. So I want to thank people for coming to that. This is this Wednesday, a couple of briefings, as I said, and also a landmark legislation for the old spaghetti house. All right.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw. Councilmember Musqueta.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is one item from the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee on today's full council agenda, and that's a big piece of policy that we've been working on over the last year in partnership with community members regarding how the city uses its funds for affordable housing. This is the ANF Plan, or the Administration and Financial Plan, for the Office of Housing Dollars, made available in 2019 and 2020. I like to refer to this as the moral compass document for the Office of Housing in terms of how they spend levy funds, incentive zoning payments, mandatory housing affordability payments, as well as other funding sources that the city administers for the creation of affordable housing. I want to highlight a few elements here, Mr. President, before we get out on full council today, just so folks know. First, I want to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Herbold for your work with us as we tried to elevate and harmonize some of our labor standards and priorities in the building of new affordable housing. We want to make sure that those who are building affordable housing are not also eligible for the same housing that they're building. And we know that the city has done quite a bit in partnership with Seattle Housing Authority, but we wanted to explicitly include language in the ANF Plan to make sure that we're looking holistically across the city about how we create a comprehensive approach to including higher labor standards within our housing policies and funding those projects. So, really excited about the future work that will come from this harmonization effort, and want to thank you. Over the last several months, we've also been meeting with various stakeholders in the community from this Community Housing Roundtable that we've been convening, who are individuals who assist those with getting into housing, individuals who need housing themselves, folks who do the building of affordable housing, especially those who are new to the housing development world, who work directly with those who are at the highest risk of displacement, and making sure that new organizations who are working with those at the highest risk of displacement do have access to housing affordability dollars. And so, we've included some key provisions based on their feedback. One of the things that you all remember last year that we did was we said, "Please stop selling off surplus land that the city owns to plug budget holes." And we want to preserve public land for the highest and best public use, which is housing, affordable housing. And our community partners at the time said, "Yes, thank you, this is a good first step." But the other concern that we have is that we're not able to access the dollars to actually build the housing. So what we've done now with the ANF Plan is we have created a complimentary piece of guiding document that will tell the Office of Housing, "Please prioritize those developers, those nonprofit developers, those developers who are in the nonprofit world, who work specifically with our communities of color, and those who are at most risk of displacement, and get them to the front of the line so that we can make sure that there's affordable housing that's being built to ensure that those who are at highest risk of displacement have an opportunity to stay and live in place where they work or age in place." This is a really important complement to the surplus land disposition proposal that we passed last year with the council's full support. So, this is really important. And it helps us to create additional housing for those who've been at risk of highest risk of displacement by supporting and enhancing the community preference policies, affirmative marketing policies. Those have been, I guess, put on steroids in this document, to make sure that we're prioritizing community members with historic ties to neighborhoods for the new affordable housing that is going in, in areas of highest risks of displacement. And we've also done another thing directly from the nonprofit community organizations that we've been talking with, and that is create additional funding for acquisition of existing buildings. You can imagine that with the cost of land in the city, the cost of labor, the cost of materials continuing to go up, if we don't have the resources to build brand-new buildings, what we should be doing is acquiring existing buildings that are affordable, updating those, and making sure that they're healthy, affordable places to live, and getting those in the city's hands so that we can get, get access to our community members. So we're really excited about this. We think this is a comprehensive approach. Want to thank the Office of Housing, specifically Director Walker and his team, Emily Alvarado and others, the mayor's office, for sending us down the proposal, and especially our colleagues here in my committee who worked to amplify and, I think, strengthen the proposal as it came down. Very, very excited about that. So that will be on full council agenda. The Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee will have a special committee meeting this Thursday on June 27, from noon to 1:30. Where we will be discussing one thing, and that is protections for hotel workers. There will be four pieces of legislation. You may have already had a chance to see that in your robust reading over the weekend. We did post the four pieces of legislation online. Thanks to many of your offices for already engaging with us. Councilmember Gonzalez and I have been working to try to get some of those details right with all of you, and we now have the four pieces of legislation ready to go. We will have a public hearing on the hotel worker legislation next Tuesday, that's July 2, at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers in the evening. Hopefully, make it more available and accessible for folks. Childcare, again, will be provided. Anybody who wants childcare, please let us know, it will be complimentary. Email my office or ashleyharrison@seattle.gov, and we will make sure to get you checked in. Parking is also going to be subsidized for those who can't get here on public transit, $5, beginning at 4:30 p.m. And we will make sure that you get those tickets in hand if you need to come and park. Want to emphasize that we're doing this on the evening of July 2. We will be canceling the July 4 Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee, obviously, because it's a holiday and my birthday. And so, we will, we will make sure to make that up on July 11. And at July 11, we will have a hearing at 9:30 a.m. We'll have the Office of Labor Standards, Race and Social Justice Presentation, possible vote on the Provider Wage Inflation Adjustment, the Hotel Worker Industry Standards, where we will be discussing amendments at that point. And as a follow-up to our last meeting, a conversation on possible vote on the Notice of Intent to Sell legislation that helps to get more tenants and nonprofit developers in line to potentially purchase properties that are going up for sale, that have at least one unit that is at 80% AMI and below, and to try to expand the scope of that legislation that you all passed a few years ago with Councilmember Clark and Burgess, I believe. Later this week, I'll be attending the AWC Board Meeting in Spokane on Tuesday and Wednesday. Look forward to seeing Councilmember Bagshaw there and all of our other council colleagues that we work with across the state. And we'll be talking, I think, about last legislative session and how we can make sure that the city's priorities are better reflected in future years. On Thursday, I'll be attending the Fair Work Center's Legal Clinic to celebrate their new legal clinic at Tin Table. As Councilmember Herbold mentioned, on Friday, a number of us, including Councilmember Herbold, Council President Harrell, myself, members of the labor community, the Coalition of Labor co-chairs and members, in addition to the Executive's Office, will be convening for an all-day retreat to talk about the Labor Management Leadership Committee. Many of you have been on that for very, you know, numbers of years and various iterations. We are reaffirming our commitment to use this body as an opportunity for us to bring together workers, management, council, Budget Office, and to talk proactively about issues that we should be able to address before they end up on the bargaining table, so that we can continue to lead by example as a good, strong, union-supporting city as an employer. In the evening, I'll be attending two things. One, the Seattle Chinatown International District Preservation Development Authority, SKPTA, BASH, and also the Seattle Housing Authority Yessler Terrace Open House. That's in the evening, really excited about that. And I'll see many of you on Sunday at Pride. Do you have a quick addendum to this? Councilmember Gonzalez wanted me to do a report for her, if I may.
Please.
Okay, sorry, council colleagues. Want to add to this, and for Councilmember Gonzalez, who's asked us to report out. Happy to do so, thank you for asking us. On the Gender Equity, Safe Communities, and New Americans Education Committee, there will be one item from the JESNA Ed Committee for today's full council agenda. That's Council Bill 119539, which relates to the King County-wide Emergency Medical Service EMS Levy, which expires at the end of 2019 and is up for renewal. We did discuss this in her committee last time we met. The council bill would authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city of Seattle, to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with King County regarding the use of the revenue from this levy. This bill would further authorize King County to place this levy proposal on the ballot for general election on the November 5, 2019, election. If approved by King County voters, the renewed levy would provide an estimated $436 million in total revenues during a six-year period from 2020 to 2025 to the Seattle Fire Department for Emergency Medical Services. This bill was held over last Monday because the county was reassessing the tax levy rate in light of changes to their financial forecasting. However, the decision was made to not adjust the rate currently in the legislation, which is 26.5 cents per $1,000 in assessed value. Therefore, no mandatory work on this legislation is necessary, and it is now ready to proceed with a vote by the full city council. So the levy proposal can be placed on the ballot for the general election in November 5, 2019. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Musqueta. Councilmember Pacheco.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So there are two PLUS-related items on the full council agenda today. Council Bill 119546, which updates the Rental, Rent Registration, and Inspection Ordinance, and Clerk File 314413, which approves a temporary expansion of the North Seattle Precinct to add for portables and parking. The next PLUS meeting is on Wednesday, July 3. And I just want to thank everybody, thank the folks who were able to join me on Saturday at the District Open House, the organizations that were able to attend and help talk to me, or, I appreciate it. Thank the scooter companies as well for participating. And if you'd like to schedule some office hours, please do so by contacting my office as I am there on Fridays. This week, I will be at the Lowerhurst Community Center Advisory Council Meeting on Wednesday. We will hosting a roundtable with the District Four Council Presidents on Wednesday as well. I'll be doing a impact, I'll be at the United Ways Emerging Leaders Impact Bash on Thursday. On Saturday, the Wedgewood Park Open House, and I'll be with all of you, or those that will be participating, at the Seattle Pride Parade on Sunday. And Councilmember Juarez, if you are going to get tacos again, we need to talk about it, so.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Pacheco. Councilmember Bryan.
Thank you. The Sustainability and Transportation Committee has one item on this afternoon's agenda. It's an appointment for the Levying of Seattle Oversight Committee. The committee does not meet this week. I am passing around a letter that you should have received in the last week that I'll be circulating for signatures at full council this afternoon. This is a letter, well, it's a letter about a letter. So, there's a letter for us to sign that essentially supports the Seattle for a Green New Deal, which has been put forward by a number of groups, but being led by GOT Green and 350 Seattle. I know a couple of, my colleagues have already signed on to this, but I want to give everyone an opportunity, and so, we have, I'm circulating a city council letter on the letterhead that folks can sign on to. If you have concerns about it, just let me know, and I'll strike the name from it. I will be at a press conference in a couple hours with City Attorney Pete Holmes about Seattle Green New Deal. And I believe there'll be a few folks that are coming after the press conference to full council to say a few words about their efforts, so.
Do we have a list of actions? I've read through the letter quickly, looked like principles that are pretty strong, and I certainly agree with, but are there specific actions at this point we're asking people to take?
That's a great question, Councilmember Bagshaw, and I appreciate you always cutting to the chase of like, "What are we actually going to do?" What I can tell you is that this, there are some ideas around actions. There aren't specific actions at this time. Part of, at least my understanding of the work that's being done, not just locally but nationally, on the Green New Deal, because of the state of affairs in Washington, D.C., it's a lot about building momentum and energy for a future opportunity to do something at the national level. But here at the local level, there are opportunities, obviously, to do things already. There are conversations that are happening with community members. Part of the framework of the Green New Deal is to really center the voices of communities most impacted by climate change, so low-income communities and communities of color, around really driving the changes. And those conversations are happening right now. There's a recognition, of course, that we need to radically reduce our carbon emissions. How do we do that is a tricky question. So, the models that a lot of traditional environmental and economists have been trying to use for the last decade have been about, "How do we increase the price of carbon emissions to try to use a market mechanism to shift people away?" And what we hear from a lot of these frontline communities is even a modest price shift can be really challenging for us and force us out of our communities. But we also are more committed than anyone to moving away from carbon emissions, we just need some help doing it. And so, what those packages look like and how they might move forward, I think, there's ongoing work to be done. I suspect that in the next even few weeks, we'll probably see some actions that they'll be asking us to take this year. And I think they'll also be laying out a groundwork for how they move forward, because a lot of this work, you know, for example, if you want to convert from a natural gas or an oil furnace to electric heat, which is 100% carbon-neutral in Seattle, it's an expensive capital cost. And so, we will need some revenues for at least some households to help them make that transition. Where do those revenues come from? How would they raise those revenues? How would they do that in a progressive way? Are all conversations that are happening. So, at the moment, this letter is more about concepts and ideas, but I suspect that before summer's over, and maybe even sooner, we will hear some very specific things within the framework that folks are going to be asking us to do, city, county, state, eventually the federal government.
Very good. Thank you.
One quick thing is, I would love it if we could find some quick wins. Let's identify some things that we, as a city, can do that's going to make progress, you know, over the next, whether it's 60 days, 90 days, 120, and then also have a schedule for looking forward for the next decade. Because I think, once people get excited about, "Hey, these are some things we can do that can really make a difference," then that builds its own momentum.
Totally agree. In my mind, I have a really bright focus on the next six months, for some reason, I'm not sure why. But I, but I think doing a lot of things in the next But I, but I think doing a lot of things in the next six months really excites me, and then laying some groundwork going forward. So I am with you, Councilmember Bagshaw. Thanks for that.
Very good. Before we move into executive session, I do want to thank many of the departments for the city of Seattle for putting together a magnificent celebration for Juneteenth Day in the Birth of Night Land. It's last Thursday. Councilmember Pacheco and I attended that great event. I want to give a special shout-out to Marta Idawu and Anita Wyatt and others who put that program together. I'm sure there are many others that played such a huge role in organizing that, but it was very well-attended, and the mayor attended as well, and they were gracious enough to let me share a few words. So, thank you for all of that. And with that, we're going to move into executive session. So as Presiding Officer, I'm announcing that the city council will now convene in an executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. It's an opportunity for us to discuss confidential legal matters with our city attorneys, as authorized by law, but we always reserve questions of public policy for public, open sessions, and a monitor from the city attorney's office is always present during these sessions to ensure that we reserve those questions of policy for our open sessions. I expect this executive session to last about 30 minutes, so that'll be 10:32 AM, and if it goes beyond that, I'll announce its extension and the expected duration. And with that, we will move into executive session.